The Monday, April 14, 2025, regular meeting of the Paris City Council is hereby called to order at 5:30 PM. For the purpose of this meeting, there's a quorum of the council present. Agenda item number two, invocation. Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation, followed by the United States Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge of Allegiance led by the city council. Please rise.
Pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you and praise you for who you are and all that you are and all that you've done for us. And we pray your blessings to continue to be on our city, that you would guide and direct our elected officials tonight as they conduct city business, that you give them wisdom and understanding. We pray for our state and our country, that likewise, Father, we might be desirous, Father, of your blessings upon our country and that we would seek after that which is right. We pray and ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, a pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas, one safe under God, one indivisible.
Agenda item number four A, proclamation declaring the month of April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'd like to start off by reading this proclamation, and then I'll have you guys come up. This proclamation is proclaiming April as the Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas in federal fiscal year 2024, the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services confirmed 53,543 victims of child abuse or neglect. And whereas, child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas, our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Texas. And whereas, child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims. And whereas, protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas, effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas, communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for children and families. And whereas, Children's Advocacy Center of Paris, the Paris Police Department, CASA, Child Protective Services, foster parents, teachers, and others work to ensure that children in our community have a safe, happy future. And now, therefore, I, Mahir Punkage, Mayor of the City of Paris, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse and Awareness Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Sign this 14th day of April 2025. If y'all will come up front, we'll take a picture.
Do you have an extra copy? This is the wrong agenda, isn't it? Yeah, I've got March. I've got the wrong agenda.
There was one she had the wrong date, but it was the right agenda.
I thought I called it the first 24.
What's wrong?
You can't have one.
Do you want me to go?
I'm not holding down here.
She's gonna get her hair combed.
Can you even send the time down?
That'd be such a big group.
Okay.
Oh, definitely.
I'll take it.
Thank you. Just want to take a moment and thank you guys one last time. We appreciate all the efforts that you guys make in helping our children and our community. And, you know, if there's anything that we can do from a council perspective or from a city perspective, please let us know. And we're always here rooting you on and wanting to have a safe meeting. But thank you all.
Thank you. Along that line, we appreciate y'all recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we do have an activity coming up April 26. It's going to be at the Love Civic Center. Would love to have the council come out, maybe read this proclamation again for the for the citizens of Paris. And we're going to try to get some foster homes for Paris and just make it a safer place to be a kid. So, thank you for your continued support and all you do for us.
Kid Safe Saturday?
Kid Safe Saturday is going to be May the 2nd. That's a different event.
Okay.
Yeah, but this is April 26, just in honor of child abuse prevention. And we're doing it with the CAC and the department and the Child Protective. We're all going to go together. And yeah, raise some awareness for the community.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Just to add, we're going to thank you, Mayor, and thank the council for their continued support of us and the department and CASA. The Children's Advocacy Center is having an open house. I think I sent invitations to the council. And you all are invited as well on Friday, the 25th, the day before the CASA event from 10 to 2. The Center, Child Advocacy Center, will be open. So if anyone would like to come by and tour the center and learn more about our programs and how we work with the community, you're welcome to come and join us.
Fantastic. Thank you all.
One last thing I will add. We want to keep this upbeat and happy. But when you look at the data book for removals for Lamar County, the state's average is 1.2 per 1,000 kids in the state of Texas. Lamar County, the last I checked, was 5.8 per 1,000 kids. So we are at a higher, maybe five times what the rest of the state is. So we really want to bring some awareness to prevention of child abuse. And that's why we're doing a lot of these activities about teaching parenting classes and really getting involved. So, thank y'all so much for bringing light to this, and we can maybe make Paris a safer place.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to four B, recognition of firefighters and presentation of new badges to newly promoted officers. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. Tonight, we're here to highlight and celebrate the achievements and the promotions of some of our brightest and most capable firefighters. Since December of 2024, we've had two captains' positions in the fire department vacated due to a resignation and a retirement. And in accordance with Texas Civil Service Law, we're required to give a promotional examination to fill these positions. Along with the captain's positions, as those gentlemen promote into that position, then that also creates driver engineer promotional opportunities. So, we gave two tests there in the middle of March. And the competition for these four promotional positions was incredible. In my 39 years of service, I've never seen this many people apply and test for vacant positions at the same time. It was just really a fantastic thing to see this many people step up. There were actually seven applicants who tested for the two captains' positions and 12 applicants for the two positions of driver engineer. That's fantastic. But that also shows you the level of competition they had and the work that they had to put into this studying for this examination. These eligibility lists were created and applicants were ranked based on their test scores and seniority. And tonight, we're proud to present these newly promoted captains and driver engineers to the city council. And we're going to bring them up there, up in front of you, and we're going to pin their badges on them. We're going to ask their significant others to pin the badges in order to recognize their hard work, dedication, and their achievements. The new officers being recognized and promoted are Captain Josie Francis. His significant other couldn't be with us tonight, so Deputy Chief Chad Graves will be pinning his badge for him. Y'all come up? Kind of get through the crowd. Wait, we'll bring the rest up. Captain Austin Bush. Captain Bush will be pinned by his wife, Taylor. We've got driver engineer Logan Lane. Logan will be pinned by his wife, Kayla. Thank you. And driver engineer Caleb Michael, who will be pinned by his wife, Chelsea. As I said, we're really proud of these exceptional firefighters. They put in a lot of work and a lot of dedication. And they studied for months to come out on top of this promotional list. So we're really proud of them, and we're happy to celebrate this achievement with them. Thank you.
Chief, I'll say this. On behalf of council, we really appreciate all that you all do for our community in helping us to stay safe, helping us to continue and prosper as a community and to thrive. For those that were promoted, congratulations. For those that are even here just to support, we appreciate you. And thank you for all the hard work you guys put forth in keeping our community safe. It's a, I know it's a thankless job, but we're genuinely appreciative and blessed to have you all serving our community.
Thank you, sir. It's an honor to serve.
Thank you. Moving on to four C, Citizens Forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city council members or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for Citizens Forum. If necessary, the city council may convene in the executive session under chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any items on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public forum. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council, with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda for discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven zero. Moving on to the regular agenda. Agenda item number 10. Conduct the first public hearing of the city's intent to disannex approximately 71.20 acres of land forming a portion of the current southeast boundary of the city located along the south of State Highway 271 South. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Very brief one, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. This, I believe, is now the third meeting we've discussed this particular, these three petitions for disannexation of the property south of 271 South between Woodall Field and Cobrange Road. And tonight, all you're doing is having the first public hearing. You will have a second public hearing, a special meeting next week, Monday, the 21st. And then we will, you will have an ordinance to discuss in May. And that's when you'll make a determination of what you're going to do.
I will open the public hearing and ask anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward. The public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion, council?
Well, this was just a public hearing. It's not really a
Discussion item.
Discussion item.
Got you. All right. We will then move on.
Do this, we can do discussion item next week if you want to discuss, do that. We can post it that way if you'd like.
Council would say, is there anything that you guys want to ask city staff at the next meeting about this particular agenda item or anything of that nature? That would be the time to probably discuss if there were any questions.
And you'll have plenty of time to discuss at the May meeting when you entertain the ordinance.
Okay. I think, I think we're good then.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Agenda item number 11. Conduct a public hearing, discuss and act on a resolution approving the submission of an application for a section, sorry, an extension of a motor vehicle crime prevention authority, MVCPA, grant for continuation of the Northeast Texas Auto Theft Task Force, approving a cash match from the City of Paris in connection with said grant extension, authorizing the execution of any and all documentation. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council. For about 31 years, I think since 1994, the Paris Police Department has participated in this grant through the Northeast Texas Auto Theft Task Force. Our task force is headed up by Detective Cody Logsdon, who's here tonight, if you have any questions of him. But through the years, we've been able to do a lot with this grant as we're able to focus primarily on vehicle fails, vehicle-related issues, and also do some education through their program. We currently have four officers that are funded through this, as well as other equipment. Again, Detective Logsdon is from Paris PD. We have one from Lamar County. And we have two from Hopkins County Sheriff's Office. And they cover about a 10-county region in Northeast Texas, so they stay pretty busy. You know, we're coming tonight asking for you to approve the resolution so we can apply for the 2026 grant. This has been a very good grant for us, and we'd like to continue it. Yeah, happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask anyone wishing to speak about this item to please come forward and state your name. We will go ahead and open the public forum. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close, close the hearing. Is there any discussion from council, any questions about this program?
What is the cash match?
Assistant chief, what's that, what's that match?
Mayor Protem, council members. Detective Cody Logsdon, commander for the Northeast Texas Auto Theft Task Force. This is a, it's a 20% cash match. I don't have an exact number yet because the grant application hasn't been wrote. But it's a total 20% cash match.
I did have one question. I know we've, we've talked about this, this particular item. It's been very helpful within our community. But I know you guys serve within, you said nine to 10 counties, correct?
Correct. 10 counties.
What, why is it that Hopkins and Lamar have that involvement, but the others don't? Or do they?
Up until recently, the task force was only, there was only investigators from Paris Police Department. It's been two detectives. 2021, I believe it was, we, due to staffing issues, we brought in Lamar County. So there was a Lamar County and a Paris PD detective. I took over in mid-2022 fiscal year. And I wrote the grant in fiscal year 2024 and expanded it to bring in some other agencies because the auto theft crime, it's just continuously growing. So we're trying to expand.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Just to follow up on Ms. Putnam's question, historically, what has been our match?
So... In fiscal year 20... I'll say for the last several years, we've, the total grant award's been around 100,000, 107,000, 117,000. Cash match was 40,000-ish. Generally, what we do is I make the fringe benefits. So my fringe benefits and the other detective's fringe benefits is the cash match. And that generally works out to about 20%. Last year... We had, so... I'm sorry. This year, what I've got, it would be around... Sorry, I thought I had it written down here. City of Paris would be around 20, 30,000, because it's my fringe benefits, and then there's some other stuff. Then we also have what's called program income, money we've made through the task force. Plan on using approximately 17,000 of that. And then the other agencies would also submit, produce cash match from their fringe benefits.
Anyone else? If not, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass.
Good. We got a motion. Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, seven zero. Thank you so much. Agenda item number 12. Discuss and act on canceling of, canceling of, or rescheduling of the May 26 city council meeting. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Hello. According to the regular meeting schedule, the fourth Monday of May is Memorial Day, and city offices will be closed. Option one is to cancel the May 26 city council meeting and do not reschedule. There are three meetings already scheduled for June, two of which are regular meetings, and one special meeting for board appointments. There will also be additional city council meetings during the summer months due to the budget cycle. Option two is to cancel the May 26 city council meeting and reschedule for May 19.
Counsel, any particular direction you guys want to go in? Either we can reschedule, or we can cancel and just move on with the three that we have in, in June.
I'm good with counseling. Cancel.
Cancel?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Well, then if that's, if that's the case, I'll take that as a motion, Mayor Protem.
There you go.
There you go. We have a second? We got a second for Mr. Ellis. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Agenda item number thirteen. Discuss neighborhood uniformity as it relates to the five and five housing program and provide direction to staff. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. So, ever since this five and five infill program came about, and I went through the moratorium somewhere in March, it's gone through changes and revisions, and right now, we are here also to look at the neighborhood uniformity. And council member Putnam raised that concern, that development is going in as infill ought to be looked at in terms of how they will be able to be in uniformity with the existing neighborhoods. And so, we have done some research into that, and we have about five different definitions. If I can quickly read through them for you.
Please.
Okay. And so, from the source, according to one of them is neighborhood uniformity refers to the degree of consistency or similarity in the characteristics of homes, properties, or overall design within a specific neighborhood. So, these might include factors like architectural styles, building materials, landscaping, color schemes, and even regulations set by homeowners, that is HOAs. So, uniformity can be contributed to work a cohesive look, which some people appreciate as maintaining property values or aesthetic appeal, while others might feel it limits individuality and creative expression. We have other sources that it defines neighborhood character. It refers to features that make areas of the city attractive in a living environment, such as neighborhood disruption includes activities that detract the safe and peaceful enjoyment of such areas. So, special exception standards that require facilities to be, to be in keeping with the neighborhood character must consider the generation of noise, dust, traffic, among other features in excess of that otherwise normal to such neighborhood. So, design can be in keeping with neighborhood character when, for example, similar exterior materials and structural members are used. And this is coming from Dutch City in Kansas. So, we have other ones like the atmosphere of, or a physical environment which is created by the combination of land use buildings within an area. Neighborhood character is established and influenced by land use type and intensity, such as traffic generation, and also by location, size, design of structures, as well as the interrelationship of all these features. And this is a definition for, from Warsaw in New York. We have another one. It talks about neighborhood plan. It says it is the master plan for a particular neighborhood or district that provides specific design standards and guidelines relating to the development and use of the property. And this is coming from Orlando, Florida. We have another one. It says a plan designed to guide the plating and remaining vacant parcels in a partially built-up neighborhood to make reasonable use of all land, correlate street patterns, and provide adequate drainage system. And this is coming from Sedana, Arizona. And so, if you look at these definitions, it doesn't specifically give a universal thing, but it kind of relates to specific and some sort of street-to-street or even within the neighborhood. And so, if you look at it, besides within the city itself, a very strong type that we have is the historic district, and which has very specific design standards. Even with that, we cannot overlay it into different neighborhoods. Every neighborhood has its own unique character, and that is what we are putting up before you today to look into it and discuss it. And so, this is a discussion item before you to look into it and give staff direction as to what we need to do, and you can present it within the next, give us the option for the upcoming or subsequent council meetings as to what we, you want us to go. So, this is up for discussion, and that's what's before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to open up this discussion for council, just see what kind of direction we'd like to give city staff to maybe potentially bring back to a later, a later council meeting.
We have to get the discussions, we got to give it to you now, can we?
We can, we can always, yeah, we can, we can wait, but just to, if there's anything in particular that we want to give to, to, to staff to be able to kind of research on for a future item?
Mayor, if I might-
Yes, please.
I'm sorry. You know, one of the things we discussed is the, the simplest way to, to build neighborhood uniformity into the five and five program is to do a very simple change that says, it has some definition, some combination or our own definition of what neighborhood uniformity means, and require that when they're submitting their plans, they have to bear that in mind and give staff the ability, or require that staff approve those plans. And that gives us the flexibility to go look at that street, look at that neighborhood, and see if it does, if it is uniform in the neighborhood. That is the, the most flexible way we have to do that, and we can do that. It, it's not the same as telling somebody what they can do with their property. It's part of an incentive program. They can choose to participate in the incentive program or not participate in the incentive program. And that's particularly true when the agreement is a result or includes the property conveyance. So, they can be subject to what we think. You know, it's going to be very difficult. It wasn't, I'm not saying that right. It was difficult, I'm sure, to come up with the historic district design standards. I know a lot of work went into that. But when you're talking about the core of the city, I think there is more variation in those neighborhoods, and it would be difficult to come up with a single set of design standards that covered all those neighborhoods, or to come up with many different sets of design standards for different blocks, different areas. So, that would be my suggestion as the simplest way to approach it.
I was just going to say, I mean, the first, thank you so much for doing the research and, and looking at other cities and the policies that they put in place, because my only goal when I brought this up is that not to devalue the other houses around and having a little bit of oversight, so people aren't just, I'm not going to say abusing, but just, you know, keeping an aesthetic consistency. Well, my favorite line of the first neighborhood uniformity was what I kind of just said. Uniformity can contribute to a cohesive look, which some people appreciate for maintaining property values or aesthetic appeals. That part of, that recommendation is good, but I agree with Stephanie that it needs some flexibility, not as rigid as the historic district guidelines, but there is some oversight.
And you can do that one of two ways. If you're going to do that simple fix, you can either have staff approve it, or the staff approval be subject to final council approval in terms of the design, that you would approve that at the same time you approved the five and five agreement. The, the only hitch in that would be if you didn't want to approve it because of the design standard, then we would have to repose, repose for another thirty days because of the tax abatement component.
Would there be an opportunity to, to provide the renderings to council prior to having a, a, a public notice?
Yes. I mean, we could provide that to you, but you could only discuss that in a public meeting, so I don't know that you gain anything by that. I mean, you, you're going to get them in your agenda packet along with the rest of the application.
Right.
But the, the rub on these is because there's a tax abatement component, there's that thirty-day posting requirement, and that can slow everything up, and we hate to do that when we don't have to. Sometimes it's unavoidable, but.
Is it, is it possible that council members who are interested in this neighborhood uniformity can kind of be selected to be part of this review applications?
I think that's a great suggestion. I mean, what does council think, you know, maybe having a subcommittee to approve the look of, of this? And so, that way, they're in line stepwise, we're not delaying the process for development, but then also being the trusted members on that subcommittee from council to say, hey, this looks good, and it stays with the uniformity of the neighborhood.
Yeah, but, but before we get there, we need to make sure the council wants this, you know. I, I, I have a few questions on this, and this may be a Duke question. Does the city, I mean, outside of five and five, outside of a neighborhood that might have these types of standards built in to, you know, building in this neighborhood, like, I guess the hills or something, they probably have standards built in. Does the city have ordinances or something, just if you, just a one-off house, that you're just building your house? Do we have standards and guidelines for a person to build a house? And I think I know the answer to that question, but I, I just want to-
Mayor Protem, members of council. We have construction standards, which would be life safety, but in those, there's no real architectural-
Right.
Or landscaping.
Easements, you can't get into the easements. You, you have to be so far off the road and all those type things, right?
And have to build it out of approved materials, you know, certain life safety. That's, the building codes is, doesn't really take aesthetics into account.
Right.
Or even so much, you know, as height or size. Building codes don't, don't address those issues.
Fourteen pitch roof, ten pitch, whatever, whatever design, you, you already have that. Most, most, most neighborhoods, you can put a brick, you can put wood, you know, whatever you want to build it with. And going back to five and five, originally, the plan was to put doors into the city to specifically use some of the lots that the city, you know, they're sitting there growing grass, and our people have to go mow them and all that, so to get our, get, get properties on our lots, get them on the tax roll, and we don't have to mow them, and the neighborhoods look better because you have a house on it. It, it wasn't necessarily the design.
Correct.
That, that was not the, the, the spirit of this five and five program. And I know outside of five and five properties, one of the big issues, and I can't remember the street, but it's between Collegiate, it's by Liberty Bank, Liberty Branch Bank, Collegiate, and I think you grew up on, on the street. I thought you said you grew up on it, what is it, Thirty First U?
I didn't grow up here.
Oh, who was it, I'm just council, somebody said they grew up on that street. Oh, Mr., I can't think of his name, the one that came and complained, he said he grew up on that street, and he was complaining that he didn't want the character to change on that street, and what we decided was to leave that part of the street, you know, one-way, and you could build duplexes off of the, the other street, next to Collegiate, whatever street that is, you could build it. But it still changed the neighborhood, because you have duplexes allowed now and normal housing over here. So, my point to that is, I don't want to sound hypocritical up here. As a council, we're okaying outside of five and five, but then we're saying in five and five where we're trying to get doors that we're going to be particular. So, that's, that's the way I see it. And it's kind of getting, to me, it's getting outside of the, the purpose or the spirit of the five and five program. And with people that's building multiple houses, it could also affect their, their funding or their, their return on their investment, and they might just pull out, because we're saying, okay, you have to build this. And then, and then here's another point to that. I know if someone in my neighborhood, if you're coming up, if your house don't look like my house, but it's an improvement, I'm going to say build it. But what we're saying here, we can't, we can't have a double standard here. What we're saying here, if all the houses on this block are wood houses, and this, these people are saying, I'm going to build a couple of brick houses, are we saying that you can't do that? Because that's not the same.
Well, we can't mandate other than life safety kind of stuff. We can't mandate what kind of building materials are used. So, I think we're in that state law. So, I think what we're really looking at is, you know, kind of the, whether you've got something ultra-modern next to bungalows or ranch houses or whatever the case may be. Now, if you own a lot and you're not in five and five in any of these neighborhoods in the program area, the design standards wouldn't apply to you because you're not-
Right.
Participating in the program.
Right.
If y'all want to do that.
Right. I just don't want to put a burden on the people that are trying to participate in the five and five. That's my only concern with this. Who, who, I mean, the idea is great, who doesn't love this? But I don't want to put a burden, because the spirit behind five and five is to put doors on these lots.
So, I don't see that it is a burden, is simply coming up with a different design that complements the neighborhood and doesn't stick out like a sore thumb. And who knows where we may go next with the building standards? Maybe, you know, that might be the next thing that we address. But personally, I would like to see the neighborhood integrity protected. It's, it's not stifling the program, it's just a different design.
I agree with Mayor Protem. I think when you make, we understand that some of the buildings don't look good because they're cheaper to construct, and it will be an increase in construction when you have to change the roof pitch. So, I think if you change anything, I would be very leery in going anything past roof pitch, siding and so on. It's just going to increase the cost of construction for the five and five program, where currently we have empty lots not making any tax money. We have tax money when we have a structure on it. I wouldn't be in favor of the council approving every project. I think that's a dangerous slope. I think we have staff that needs to be taking care of that, but I'm along same lines as Mayor Protem.
And, and I will say this, Ms. Putnam and Ms. Norman, I, I think I brought it up to deputy manager and city manager and mayor in a meeting, that I saw one that's, I think it's in the five and five, and it looked like a shed. And so, with that in mind, I think we need to do something. But I'm agreeing with Rudy, we don't need to go too far.
I mean, based on the application of the, the most recent, there were two options. It was a gable-style roof or a very modern slanted shed. And that's, that was my, that's what made me bring this up. This is, this is the fear that, you know, there's a bunch of gable traditional houses, and then you have brown or, you know, not, they just, they're not congruent with the existing structures. So, just a little bit of guidance and oversight, as simple as the pitch of the roof, just that we can, it is obviously an incentive for the, you know, that we want more doors built, but, but also, you know, they're selling the dots, lots for a dollar. And we want them to sell, and we want the rest of the neighborhood to sell, because they, when they see a nice house that looks similar, maybe that's going to be- maybe that's going to be your neighbor and wants to put money into the next lot that's not in part of the five and five.
So do we have a standard on the square footage of a house? Does it have to be a certain square footage? I mean, is there a minimum?
Yes, depending on the zoning district that you're in.
Okay.
It goes from, I believe, one thousand to fifteen hundred, depending on the, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred. If it's FS1, SF2, SF3, or if it's in a 2F zoning district.
Okay.
Or four, there's minimum size. And then maximum would be lot coverage. You'd have a maximum size that you could go.
If we're talking about the same house, I don't see how it could be a thousand square feet. But man, it's really...
Well, I mean, if we're limiting the square feet or if we have recommendations on that, then I don't see the difference between the recommendations on that and something as simple as the pitch of the roof.
Yeah, but I think that's city ordinance all over the city. Yeah, I think that's just standard. That's the only difference in that.
Well, and I think also, just to add in, I mean, I know we've been talking a little bit about the roof and the pitch and whatnot, but, you know, even going back a few years now, with past council members that have been here, they've also, you know, before the moratorium, we discussed landscaping. And there are several of these lots that have come about that, you know, have a lack of grass, lack of any sort of plants or anything. And I don't want to harp so much on landscaping, but we got to set some sort of standard. And I think that we've come up with a pretty decent standard after that moratorium. But just to, I see both sides of the story here and I think that we need to get down to something that, well, whittle it down to something where we're, again, not putting a burden on that developer, but also not putting the risk of property owners in that neighborhood of having their value go down because of something that is out of line. Now, if that is something that is, we're going to be discussing the roof pitch and if that's where it stops and, hey, I think we just need to set a good boundary of where do we, where is that fine line? And I don't think we're going to get down to the crux of it today, but I think that we definitely should maybe have more of a discussion about this and see legally what is, what is that, where can we put that boundary? Where can we say that, hey?
Get some feedback from some of the builders. So I think what people have the issue with are the very flat roofs that are just one roof over the whole structure. Is that the main ones that I think people have a concern about?
I believe so. I think that's what, that's what the main concern is.
Could we get some feedback by all checking in with the builders of increased costing construction by having a gabled roof versus one? What would be the right term for that, the one?
Like just that one segment?
Gabled as opposed to mansmade, as opposed to a flat roof or shed roof?
And not quite flat, but obviously just one roof over the whole structure, not gabled.
That's a shed roof, yes.
Shed roof, okay. So, and get some feedback if any of the current projects, I don't want current projects to fall through that are already approved. And I guess that this would only affect future ones. So anyway, I think it would help roof structure being the biggest factor and difference and trying to get a little bit of feedback on cost.
Is that something that council seems like a good idea to maybe for staff to take back to some of these developers and see, hey, if you were to have gone with a pitched roof as opposed to that shed roof, what would that cost look like? For us to be able to understand, hey, what, where is the burden here? If there is one, could it have been a gable roof per the price?
I mean, I think any developer, I, I mean, they're going to want to see the plan that has the decreased cost. I mean, I think, I think you know the answer to that question. It's going to be less, but...
But how much of a burden do we want to put? Again, otherwise, it's an empty lot in a lot of cases that doesn't collect any kind of revenue. While if you have a structure there that's appraised at a hundred thousand, it's bringing in revenue to the city.
I mean, the application did have two designs. And I just feel like if they have two designs, could we at least have a little bit of oversight, one versus the other?
Remind me again, were we, do you guys remember this particular case that we had talked about in the five and five program? I think it was the most, the latest one. I cannot remember, so if you will please clarify. Do you, did we have the option to pick one design over the other? I don't quite remember.
They withdrew that application, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, so it came up.
But they had submitted an alternative before they withdrew the application.
Yeah, we talked to them that it was not something that we told them that it was required, but it was a discussion, a suggestion that we will want something, we would like to see something that will be in uniformity with the, you know, neighborhood. And so they brought up something similar in replacement of what they had submitted.
That sounds like a good plan, too. I mean, that was, I guess that was a builder's choice to say, hey, here's another rendering or here's an alternative rendering. What say you, council? Maybe that's another solution. Just trying to find some options here that we can agree on, that we could take back to staff to be able to have some direction.
If, let's say, you all agree or further discussions, my recommendation will be legal can look into it, but we will put a type of ordinance forward in the guideline that will not be a sort of a requirement, but a suggestive design where developer and city will come to agreement of a proposed neighborhood design, so.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of wishy-washy. You know, I think you could still do something about that that the city could have, has the right to approve designs and that the marching orders from, and have, you know, have your definition of what neighborhood uniformity is and, you know, maybe put something in there that what we're really concerned about if this is the case is, you know, the roof line and that the city has the ability to reject a design, which gives them the opportunity to submit an alternative plan. With the marching orders to the staff being, this is our main concern. You know, we're not going to tell them every single thing to do in their design. We just want it not to be really out of place.
I like that.
I think that's fair.
I like that. And it kind of goes to me and Rue's concern about adding cost to the builders. And so staff, hopefully, and like Rudy said, staff should handle this and I think staff should take that into consideration if it's going to add cost. We have, you know, experts, they know what adds cost and what doesn't. And if they, and like they're saying, we need, we do need oversight on that. But if you guys can take that, because I think the consideration here is we all want a better design, but we don't want to put a burden because we want doors. So if staff can handle that piece, I think we'll all be good with it.
Well, and we could even put in the guidelines that, you know, it is not the city's intention to dictate all their design to them, but we have a concern for neighborhood uniformity and then the rest of it. And yeah, I can draft that and we can bring that back to you.
And just a reminder, I mean, I'm so glad we put the moratorium because the first time we made this available, somebody was trying to buy awful lots.
Yeah, right.
And so we put those protections in because we want to have some input of who the developer is, the quality of the development. And so I'm just trying to just add one more thing, but...
Well, and I think that that's a good thing. I mean, this is a, these types of discussions are great and it seems like it's coming all too often from this council, which is wonderful. We've got to keep having these spirited debates to kind of understand a good compromise to, hey, let's get more doors and let's get the right design that's going to fit without putting that constraint on the builder. So this is a good discussion. Do we feel aligned in this, kind of bringing this back to city staff on this? We feel pretty much in line with that? We feel good about that? Ms. Norman?
Thanks for signaling me out.
I got you, I got you.
So can you repeat again what that's going to be, what that's going to look like?
I'll try. And I'm not going to just draft it out loud here, but my, the idea is that to say, you know, the city, it's not the intent of the guidelines with respect to design to dictate all their design decisions. But here is what neighborhood uniformity is and the city has an interest in promoting neighborhood uniformity. So the city will have the ability to not approve a design that doesn't have neighborhood uniformity in mind and does, and really just kind of blows that out of the water. And I will write that much better than I just said that. But it gives the staff the ability to reject that and allows the developer then to come in with an alternative design.
And I also think that, you know, look, once these plans are presented, I like that we have these discussions. I think we need to have a fair discussion with that developer and that way they understand fully the intent behind what we're looking for as a council.
But hopefully, with that in the guidelines, we're not even going to have to have the discussion because they're going to say, well, it needs to kind of look like everything else in the neighborhood, more or less. And I can't put something ultra-modern on a street full of bungalows, so I'm not even going to ask them to. So hopefully, that guideline will kind of keep those things from even coming up to the forefront.
If it'll stop what I saw, I'm all for it.
All right. We feel good about that?
Yes, we will sit with legal and draft something and we will present to you and we'll go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And what I have in mind is going ahead and doing a guideline revision with a resolution to bring back to you. And if you don't like that at the next meeting and you want something changed, we'll bring it back to you the next meeting. So you like it.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to agenda item number fourteen. Discuss a citywide rental home inspection program and provide direction to staff. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members of Council again. Currently, oh, thank you. Currently, there is no enforcement mechanism or really a standard policy for citywide rental units. I have a little slideshow here I'd like to jump into if I can. A large number of complaints that we get are for rental properties.
Mr. McGee, could you be sure you're speaking into the microphone?
Electrical safety hazards, exhaust hazards, health hazards and structural concerns are some of the largest ones that we find. These are all, these are all pictures from, from actual residents here in Paris. It's just one that's burnt wiring in there. This is actually a minor one. We've seen a lot worse where the conductors have been burnt, overheated from de-electrical. These are damage-exposed wirings. Like I say, this is very common that we see. These are all shock hazards, fire hazards. This is a pretty main, this is a pretty major one. These are all furnace or hot water heaters. Their vent piping has been disconnected, which allows CO, quiet killer. Raw sewage leaks that we've seen out, getting into our stormwater and creating health hazard, structural concerns. Again, these are some minor ones. What seems to happen is we'll receive a complaint, we'll go out, find life safety concerns, order repairs, the tenant gets evicted. We have no more enforcement mechanism because now it's a vacant house. Nothing to enforce. Another renter will come in, cycle continues, continues, continues. When left on this cycle, this is eventually what happens. This was actually a rental unit here in Paris, Texas that was rented, had continued violations, and this is the status of it now. It's fixing to go to the Board of, we have buildings and standards to be tore down. So annual safety inspections are crucial to ensuring the safety and well-being of occupants in a building. Here are some key, I'm just going to list some key factors of what these entail. They ensure code compliance. They identify potential hazards. They prevent fire and other emergencies. It protects the occupant's health and safety. It mitigates liability risk for the tenant and for the, tentee? Renter and the rentee, however you say that. Insurance and liability benefits, this could actually benefit landlords being able to have these documented inspections. Maintenance emergency readiness, it makes, you know, they can prepare for stuff that's coming up. Promotes long-term stability and it improves the building value of not just that structure, but structures in the neighborhood like we were talking about earlier, neighborhood uniformity. So staff is just looking for direction on how would you like to proceed or?
Yes.
Did you say life safety? What all would be included in that? What all would you be looking for in a building?
Basically, we have adopted the property, property maintenance, uniform property maintenance, some of that. And looking at other cities, you just go in and you check for stuff like that, for loose wiring, for hazards, disconnected plumbing or lack of plumbing. You know, there's, I don't know how many places I went out and people had to stop up in their waistlines so they just cut it off and let it flow underneath the house or out into the street. So it'd be basically life safety. And we could come up with a list of, you know, what that would be, you know, what an inspection would look like.
Yes, I think, very honest with you, this is a travesty. No one needs to be living in these types of conditions at all. And I don't care if you're in the city of Paris or whatever other city, this is not acceptable. And so whatever it takes, I want to find a way with my fellow colleagues here to find a solution to figure this out because we've got to get out of this rut. In going back to our housing study, we see the same thing that, hey, we have so many renters and rentees here. I understand that and I don't want to step on anyone's feet from a business standpoint. I don't. But we have to do it diplomatically and it's got to be safe. So whatever that looks like in terms of, you know, the safety portion of it, plumbing portion of it, you name it, we've got to find a good, happy medium and something that's going to be cost-effective for the city to be able to look at these inspections. And is it, you know, is it in-house? Is it, do we hire someone to do these? You know, have a good relationship with this individual and to trust that, hey, whatever rentals there are that we're actually going in and inspecting them fairly, judiciously, making sure that everything's done correctly. And so maybe we could look at other communities and see what they've done as maybe a guide, per se.
So how often would the property be inspected?
Typically, on something like this, it would be on an annual basis or as needed, like if a tenant moved in and then out. One of the best ones that would make more sense and help both the landlord and the tenant is if it was on a move-in, move-out basis. That actually benefits the landlord on giving him a third party, you know, or the city's documentation of, here's what my apartment looks like or my rental unit looks like when these moved out and then when these moved in. So, you know, for security deposit reasons or litigation or anything like that, it gives a third party, no, there wasn't a hole in the wall or yes, there was a hole in the wall type thing. So on longer term, like say you have a single-family home where somebody's living there for three, four, five years, then it might not be, you know, it might be an annual or maybe other, every other year or something like that that would have to be looked at and worked out. to be looked at and, and worked out.
So it would be either move in and, move in and move out, or annually?
Yes.
One or the other?
Well, or a combination of both.
That would be confusing.
Well, you'd have to have a registration program.
And if you had it annually, then you have a schedule?
Right.
And if you have a move-in and move-out, because a lot of times renters leave in the middle of the night, the next ones come in a few days later, who's gonna notify the city?
Yeah.
You know, but I, I
Fair point, yeah.
I think it's a great idea, but I think an annual inspection would... And how are we gonna pay for this?
Right.
Is, is that something that is gonna be the city's cost, or are, is the landlord gonna have to pay a fee that covers the employee's, you know, salary?
It's something staff could look at and come back with a, with a proposal.
Yeah, I think, I think time, frequency is, is definitely one of those. And I, I do agree with Councilmember Norman on that, that it makes most sense on an annual basis just because you never know the, the, how, how life works for some of these rentees, right? They may come one day and be gone the next, and then you've gotta do like five different inspections for that same residence, right? So I do agree on the annual basis. I think that's a good, that's a good way to look at that. And then also, please.
Well, and then also for the family that lives there for five years, something could be fine in the first year, and near three it breaks, and the landlord never repairs it, that protects that renter in the third or fourth year as well.
Absolutely. And I would hope that the outcome of this would be to build a better bond betw- between those that have rental properties and the city, to have good guidance to say, hey, this is what we wanna look at for the safety of your investment and for the safety of the people who are staying in the home, your customers. So absolutely.
I think there's some very substandard housing that is for rent here in Paris, so I think it is very important. I don't, I think if you had a basic checklist, so if you bring back some more information on flooring, electrical, plumbing, whatever you're checking for, we don't need to check for a hole in the sheetrock, but the main system, so if that can be included, that would be great.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll, we'll look at?
Well, we're not done yet.
Go ahead, please.
So some, some, when I rented, you know, I complained to the landlord about things, you know, the light's not working, or whatever, you complain to the landlord, and then you all, you also had legal options. And I don't know if we wanna insert ourselves in all this. And one of the things Ms. Norman brought up is, you know, how would we be notified, how often, and all those things. But I think she asked you about the cost, and, and you said you'd come back with it. So we looked at this program, we haven't looked at cost?
I would say there's options. You can have the rent, renter, the owner of the property, pay for an annual inspection. I think where I've been before, I think it was every two years that they had to be inspected. Or I, I'm not sure how it works, and I don't know how they're doing it now, if the renter requests an inspection, because sometimes they'll request an inspection if they're not getting any attention from their landlord to fix the item. So the person renting may request an inspection, but the, usually from my experience, the required inspection would be paid by the landlord.
Yeah, so I, and I've called the city on some issues, you know, citizens are calling and say, hey, they live in apartments, and the apartments are substandard, the water's not working. City goes out, I think I've called Clyde on some, and the city went out and found that what they said was true, and they gave them a timeline to get this stuff fixed. And I think that option is still there. But when, when I say cost, we have thousands of rental properties in Paris. Our engineering staff, who's gonna do this? Who would do this? What department?
Well, there is an option to have the landlord pay, and then we can work with other inspectors in town to put the list together and have them go out and do it. So I think that's what Duke means, is that we can bring you back options. We don't really have it set in stone of how we think it would be, but we could play with some ideas and put some options together and bring them back to you.
Yeah, 'cause my point to that is if, if it's something that's gonna add cost to the city, we have to add employees because they can't do it. You have thousands of units. So if it's gonna add cost to the city, I don't see why, and, and I don't see why we would add employees to do this, when there's really options out there. And I guess if we talk to the fire chief, I don't, I don't think we've had a lot of incidents, except for, you know, the one where it was a shelter. You know, we hadn't had a lot of incidents where rental properties have caught on fire and cost people their lives and things, and I know that factors into it, why citizens would spend tax money to go into something like this. There, there has to be some, some data that's showing that it's a safety issue. You know, hazards, we're running into hazards from rental properties, but I don't think that's happening. So I don't see putting money into this. I know there are substandard properties out there, but I, I, I don't see doing that and adding employees.
I don't, I don't think, this is in my head that I'm thinking about this program, but if you were to have a nominal fee that goes to the landowner or the property owner, that would then pay for the inspection itself in the, in the wage for that inspector, if you will, or inspectors, however many, whatever, it's one, three, who knows. But a, at that point, it's really not an occurrence that you would have these fees coming out of someone else's pockets or taxpayer pockets. It's an investment from a business standpoint for that property owner. It's, it's what I'm playing in my mind as to how that would work.
Yeah, but when you have, I, I have a friend that does that, and it's $400, $500 a shot, depending on how, what facility, or, or if it's a duplex, or apartments, whatever. So it's a lot of money. So when you own a lot of properties, and you're talking about $400 per property, the homeowners, the landowners are gonna complain about that, the landlords. They're gonna complain about that.
They're also getting lots of rent money.
To what now?
They're also getting lots of rent money for substandard places.
I, I know that, but the city has ordinances on those houses that a lot of people have complained in the city that our, our ordinances or standards are not high enough for rental properties. And, I mean, you can, you can rent a shack, and it'll meet our standards.
Well, right, but this, this will help to mitigate that.
How? When our standards say that it's okay, so inspections won't change that?
But, but Mayor Proten Savage, wouldn't that help, that, wouldn't that help for us to be able to understand, so that way we can't change those ordinances? Because that way, right?
So I have something to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Why target rent, rental properties and not everyone? So if you're gonna charge a landlord, you're gonna inspect rental properties, why don't you inspect my home? I mean?
That's a valid point.
It's a fair question.
Well, I, I think the answer to that is that, is
What's the difference? I mean?
You're not gonna live in a substandard home.
Right, but he said
But a rental, a renter is at the, at the mercy of the landowner.
Right.
And so we have, and, and they're making money on that as a business.
Right, right. So what about the safety of, of your home? I'm not saying that your home, my home.
Example.
My mayor's home. What, I mean, we gotta make this fair to everyone.
One
Not just, I'm not saying it to, just to say it, but we need to make it fair where you're just not targeting people, landlords and people that have rental property. That's just my opinion.
One, one answer to that is, number one, if you're a homeowner, you're gonna be taking care of your home
Mm-hmm.
even more so. When you're renting, especially if you have a fixed income, and this is what we run into on the complaints, is they can't afford, that the renters can't afford, and they don't have a recourse. We don't have an enforcement action. I don't know how many times I've told them to go seek legal counsel, but what that ends up happening is then they get evicted. You really wouldn't get evicted out of your own house. And typically, we, we don't do safety inspections on single-family residents that's owner-occupied. That's, you know, at, at any time, a homeowner can call up a contractor or a, a private inspector and come in and have their home evaluated, or, or, hey, my furnace is going out. They can call a contractor up, and they'll give them a bid price and say, here's, I gotta fix it. A renter does not have that option. They can't call up a contractor, get bid prices, and then expect to get it taken care of. You know, they're, they're beholding to the landlord. And it, it is a tough, it, it's a hard call, especially when you're dealing with tenants and landlords, you know. Not every landlord is bad, not every tenant is good.
To that point, to that point, you, we're trying to eliminate slumlords. And we know, a lot of us know, a lot of the slumlords here, but we also know legitimate, most of the people are legitimate providers of, of rental properties, and so we're, we're gonna hit them with this same fee that the slumlords are gonna have, and that's where I'm saying that I don't think it's fair. And would this go also into public housing? Would, would they be inspected as well? Would they fall into this?
We can look into that. I, I believe public housing with, with HUD and stuff like that, they have inspections that they
Yeah.
are supposed to be doing
Yeah, they do.
and performing.
They do. I was just wondering.
So that would be something that we could look into, if, if public housing and stuff like that would be included in this, and, and what that would entail. And, and we'll get, we can get you some cost estimates on different variations, how different cities and, and stuff like that does.
I think from
The life safety.
From a public housing standpoint, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think HUD goes through it, and I don't, I don't think we would have that jurisdiction to be able to go through that legally, at least that, that I know of, but that is a fair point. That's a good, we'd have that clarity on that for sure.
Yeah.
But then also, I, I think going back to Councilmember Moore's question on that too, I think insurance, I believe insurance plays a lot into that too, right? Because if we, if I have my, my own home, it would be within the best interest for me personally as a, as a homeowner to make sure that, hey, my roof is, is good, so that way I get adequate insurance.
Oh, yeah.
But then from a, you know, from a renter's standpoint, I don't think they get, they don't get that option, and that's that, that's that rent, rent, what's it, renter, rentee? That's, that's on the rentee, the landowner, if you will. And unfortunately, that renter then doesn't have that opportunity to be able to argue for it and say, hey, look, like, I've got water coming down, I've got rain coming down in my bed, like, what's going on here? And so I think that just to give them a voice, I'm not saying, please, I, I hope the public doesn't take this the wrong way, but, you know, I don't think all property owners, all rental facilities are in bad condition, but this is to standardize and to help with that process. And I would hope that it wouldn't be a full scope of a new property where you're having to inspect every nook and cranny, but just for safety and full functionality of the water system, being able to flush the toilet and isn't going into the, is it going into the sewer main, right? Just basic, basic functions of humanity.
And I also wanted to say, when you ask some of the property owners, the landlords, I'd say the, the good ones typically don't mind this because it helps them with their properties, because they may be surrounded by, they may have some, some good properties surrounded by some bad landlords, and that brings their rental capabilities down, or how much money they could make because they could be next door to people who aren't taking care of their properties while they're trying to take care of theirs. And so what I have seen is many landlords that are good like it. But, and you can, because it is, it can typically be such a fast inspection, it may not be as costly as you would think, 'cause you want them to go in and make sure, just to check some basic stuff and get out. So it can be, we could, we could look at costs, and also, like I said, I think as a manager, what I would prefer would be to work with the third-party inspector to do it, like we do with other things sometimes. So we can look at those costs if you guys have the appetite for that. And we could also talk to some property rental owners, some major ones in town, and see how they feel.
Yeah, yeah, because all the ones I know are not gonna like this increased cost because it's significant when you think of the amount of properties that they have.
It can add up, that is for sure. You are right about that.
I think it's open to council, but I, I personally think that we should look into this further, and, and at least get an understanding of what this could be, what are, what, what are other communities doing with this type of a topic? How is it conducted? What, what are the results that they've been seeing within their communities? And then obviously looking at the, maybe the safety, the safety component of it, what, what Councilmember Kessel was talking about, and then obviously what, what Ms. Norman was talking about also. But is, is there anything else, or anything else that anyone has that you'd wanna maybe throw out there for, for discussion or direction?
I mean, I, I think that substandard living and just having a layer of protection for these tenants is really important. I mean, these pictures are horrible, and this has gone on, we all know it's gone on for many years, and heard the stories. Other councils have discussed it. I think that a real evaluation of what a program like this is, it's time. Other cities do it, so, and we're trying to elevate the conditions. And it can be a minimal inspection fee, like just quality of life and life and safety. I mean, that's the minimum.
Some of these substandard houses fall under code as well, city code violations. Maybe we need to ramp that up, because some, some of the stuff that I've seen, and I know all of y'all have seen it, they're rental properties, and, and code could, could tackle a lot of this.
And that's what gives us the power to go in and see.
And it could, I mean, we could probably even highlight trends, absolutely.
Yeah, big code violations in all those pictures.
By, by enacting something similar to this program, whatever this may shape out to be, we can then understand, hey, listen, how many homes within this sector are we seeing that have the similar, similar issues versus this sector, versus this sector, this sector? And I think we can probably understand a little bit more of, you know, if we're around 50% of rental, let's see where we're really at, and, and based off property value. Let's figure out what, what, what are the issues that we're facing from a community standpoint?
So, you know, I, my point is, I don't think it's fair to penalize people that take care of their properties. So maybe we could make it a complaint-based search. You know, we were trying to talk about how, what, what would trigger going in, annual or someone moving out. Maybe if we got, you know, complaints on this property, then that would trigger us going in versus penalizing everybody.
One of the, one of the, one of the things we have going on right now is, on that, right now it is complaint-based. And over the years, I, for me being here, I, about a month, two months after I was here, I was getting probably 10 to 15 calls a month. And then they started dropping off because I was going out and enforcing this because people were getting evicted. And then what, what happens is it's really under-reported because they don't wanna complain. If they're rent, living in a substandard place for significantly less than what they'd have to pay someplace else, they're not gonna report that. So it's really hard to get. I, I tried to get facts and statistics on some of the stuff, but it's really under-reported. A lot of times, it doesn't get reported to us until it gets to a, a point where code does have to go out because you could see something that is deteriorating on the exterior. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things, it's, it's really hard to, to do, but we, we'll get as much information from the complaints that I can. I've documented over the years, but it's, it's really, like I say, it's under-reported. We still get maybe an hour's down, and maybe four or five a month, but I know there's others out there. And then again, the same thing that happens is, once I show up on a complaint, I can almost guarantee you the very next day, that renter's gone. They've been evicted for complaining. And then, then that's what I was saying on the beginning, is there's no enforcement action after that. I, as, as a building official, a vacant structure, I have to wait for it to go through the, as long as it's been vacant, it's a hundred and some odd days before any action can be taken on it. You know, and then in that time, and unfortunately, you know, it gets, you, you can mark it, but then making sure you get back to check. Normally, another person will get moved in there, and then this, like I say, that cycle just starts over and over again. And
So, so that
Code to take an issue.
Is that, after a hundred days, do you re-inspect to see if that violation has been, is that, is that what you're saying?
You know, it becomes a vacant building, you have, the state law says you have to wait a certain amount of days, that, that a building is vacant before you can come in and say, okay, this is a vacant building now. And it's, it's property rights thing, you know, for, for somebody. So once it become that, then you can placard it, say, okay, you know, you gotta take care of it, fix it or whatever, but then it ends up in code enforcement, and then going to Buildings and Standards, and then that's another, you know, 30, 60-day process. But as far as somebody living in there, again, it, it's one of those things that there's not a that there's not a whole lot of an enforcement mechanism that you can, you can do, especially if they're paying rent, you know?
I think that should be part of maybe one of the criterias that look at, to see if other communities that have a similar program to this, is it complaint-driven or is it off of an annual basis? Or is it, you know, based off the frequency? How, how does this being conducted? But I, I think we definitely need to know some more information on this program just to see, hey, what are the nuances? Uh, the groundwork, if you will.
Pros and cons as well.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Anything else, council? Thank you so much, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number 15. Receive update on special projects to be funded out of the $400,000 received from the solar farm disannexation project. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, good evening. Uh, last council meeting, I brought to you 12 different projects that could be funded possibly in part or in full from the $400,000 from the solar farm disannexation. Um, you've asked me to, uh, reduce that list. And then there are, there's some funding mechanisms that we're looking at. For example, the hotel oc- hot hotel, uh, tax fund, TERS and/or equipment fund for the fire to equipment, fire equipment, the brush truck. So I'm narrowing that, uh, list to bring back to you. And working very closely with Mr. Paul Allen, uh, with the Chamber of Commerce, there are some opportunities for us to partner with, uh, hot tax. So in order to be able to do that and to bring you that list back and have a good possibility of, of options, it, it's going to take some time working with the chamber. He'll have to go to his board and then we'll have to have an agreement if we are to use hot funds like we did with the, uh, the boat ramp. It was an 80/20 split. So hopefully it would be a, be a little bit more aggressive partnership on some of these projects. Um, but if we could ask for a little bit more time and then come back to you the first meeting in May, we'll have that list down. The, the goal is to maximize how many projects we can do with this money. And, and if we can utilize hot, uh, and/or TERS and, and also some, an equipment loan. And then, uh, council can look at that, make your choice. So that's our update. And Mr. Paul Allen, I believe, is still here. If anyone would ask, I'd like to talk to him about how he could use his hot to help us on these projects. But I thank him for being here and thank you, thank him for coming to the table and, and making that available.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Vine or Mr. Allen?
Hey, I have a question. Um, um, specifically, have you identified the hot tax projects, at least at Lake Crook and the, um,
That is one, that's one option, yes.
Like crook bathrooms and, um, what about around the civic center and the asphalt or any-
For possible hot, hot funds, we are looking at bathrooms, First Street and Bow Ramp.
Okay, great. Um, I am considering, or I've thought about this, just talking to, um, Ms. Beverly and, uh, opportunities for a, uh, parks and rec plan. Um, I understand we don't really have one that's been updated in many years. Um,
I believe that plan is due to be renewed this year.
Right. Um, I didn't know if there's any additional costs that would be part of that to get a design company to help, um, update it and, you know, do an inventory of our existing parks, um, things that need improvements, um, what those costs look like, but just something, a guideline that we can use with the projects that, uh, the chamber wants to do, the city might do in the future. Um, could you kind of get some idea of what a design would cost?
Maybe 120,000-ish.
Okay.
So are, are you requesting that that be added to the possible project list?
I am. I think, um,
Okay.
In the spirit of tourism and growth, just like we, you know, need a good strategic plan, we need, um, guidance to hire city managers. I think going outside to find comprehensive community plans is, is really important for the council to get direction, so.
Okay.
Do you have a quick question regarding that item? Uh, is it, is that something we've already had budgeted for this year, perhaps?
I don't think so.
I do not believe so, no.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I have a question. Uh, is it anything, um, concerning the west side is on the project list?
We did-
Anything we could do for the west side?
Okay. And in picking these goals, we picked things that would, uh, benefit the entire community regardless of where they were. Um, Lake Crook, anyone can go to Lake Crook Sports Complex, anyone can go there. So we, we purposely did not pick specific areas. We picked amenities.
Okay.
Um, or, or places that people could go to and things that anybody could do. So to answer your question, no, we do not have a specific project on east or west.
No, we can't. Can we discuss that or is that?
Certainly. Do you have a suggestion or recommendation?
Uh, I, I'll, I'll talk to you about it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good point. I mean, like we said last time, you know, if there's something that is a need in our community that you have seen, I think that should be definitely brought up, just like what you did, Ms. Putnam. I think, I think that should be brought up. And please feel free, I mean, we have up until, what's the, what's that, what's the date of that meeting again? The first one in May, correct?
First one in May.
First, first Monday in May. Uh, or second, sorry, second Monday in May.
But the, the earlier we have this information, the easier it is to compile this list because it, whatever we add may or may not be, uh, covered by hot.
Got you. Please.
So what is on the second Monday of May? What, on-
So the, the options, the options for this, uh, for this 400,000, what we can allocate it towards, what we can earmark it towards. If there's something else that you think that hasn't been addressed previously for today, if you have an idea, just send it over to Mr. Vine?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know about how much money we collect annually on hot tax?
Approximately 49,000, roughly.
Do you know how much money the city has in its reserves from hot tax?
Hot, approximately 517,000.
Hmm.
And with these projects, we would not, we would like to not go under 50% of what we have.
Okay.
Um, that way we're able to continue to do projects as we move forward.
Now, that's the, that's the city's portion of it, not the-
5% the city has, yes.
I just feel like if any of these ideas, I mean, I'm, again, going back to pro-growth, thinking about tourism, when we have more outside dollars in Paris, it lifts everybody. Um, and, and then, and I, I like the idea of splitting it up, the whole 400,000 to support multiple goals. Um, so I appreciate you kind of helping us get to those, reaching everyone, or not everyone.
Again, the chamber has been a huge help.
And yes, thank you to the chamber.
Yeah, I'll just, just state for the record also that that hot tax, I would like to make sure that that hot tax is being spent towards the pillars of what the hot tax is supposed to be spent for.
Well, it has to be or it's illegal.
Exactly. I, I've seen a lot of cities try to get away with it and then it gets ugly, so I just wanna make sure.
They come to me and I'm the killer of dreams.
There you go.
Can you kind of, are there guidelines, or from top of your head, what is it? Is it just infrastructure with hot tax?
Mainly for, mainly what's gonna bring tourism. So if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be something that's out, uh, for example, a plan or, or, or a fuel farm, that doesn't bring tourism, but that, but we could still use it, just not for hot tax. That makes sense.
It's really fairly complex because the statute was written by about 500 people with, with different, it's very bracketed statute. So, you know, there'll be one expenditure that can be done by a county of so many thousand people, you know, bordering the Gulf of Mexico with at least one oil well and the moon is blue. You know, it's crazy like that. But basically it has to be dedicated towards bringing in tourism. And what we call that is the heads and beds tax, or heads and beds factor. So you're looking at bringing in overnight tourists. And then the other component is, it has to be one of, as far as we're concerned, because we're not one of these bracketed cities, is basically nine different categories of things. So what you're, you're doing, the, the Texas two-step is what the comptroller calls it. You're doing the heads and beds test. Okay, yes, it will bring people in. Okay, is it in one of these nine different categories? Um, and, you know, some of it has to do with sports. There's a really narrow historic preservation. Uh, they're just, it's, you've gotta look at each thing on a case-by-case basis.
I mean, I get the ask all the time, um, about Paris hosting more sporting, for you sports because there's tons of travel, I mean, my family included. That's what we do every weekend is go to surrounding towns of Paris and spend money and sleep in hotels. And, um, I just think it's a really missed opportunity that we could be collecting that hot tax. Um, and it would be good for, you know, restaurants and shops and, and lots of, um, other ideas. But, um, yeah, I'm just, and that's why I would like to see a plan to help us get to that vision. So, um, we have a guideline. Um, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight, but, that was my thoughts.
We will add that to the list.
Yes. All right. Anyone else?
Well, I, I'm still saying that I think the 400,000 should be spent on the fuel farm so we can start realizing the savings immediately. And the reason why I'm saying that, because, you know, due to the creativity of the city and, and chamber, we're, we're getting, uh, some of the other things on the list done. And then found out that we have a reserve of hot tax and we can get even more done. Uh, so I think that would be a great compromise to go ahead and pay off that, start realizing that savings and then gets a few other things on the list done.
Anyone else? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, agenda item number 16. Discuss the status and plans for the sanitation trucks previously operated in the city sanitation service department. Staff, do you have a presentation?
G'day, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Uh, on March 24th of last council meeting, Mayor Protem requested, uh, asking about the, uh, city-owned sanitation trucks. Uh, we have eight total. Can y'all see the screen? Okay. So the, the first one here, we plan on keeping three of, three of the trash trucks. We kept, was gonna keep the newer ones. This one is what we keep at our compost site. We use it for recycling. Uh, when people bring the recyclables to, we, we compact it so we can get more in the load. We, we usually go Durant is where we have to take our recycling. We take it about once a month. The next one here is our other truck. It is the, uh, 2020 Hino. If you look on your list of the memorandum I sent, these are gonna be in order as well on that. Uh, that's one that's just a newer truck. We keep it as a backup in case the one in Durant goes down or the one that code enforcement is using.
Looks like a real beauty.
Right. Uh, this one is, uh, unit 1298. We actually gave that to code enforcement. They, they utilize it a lot in their demolition program and, and cleaning up, uh, the ditches, uh, you know, the trash people throw out where they're not supposed to. Uh, here the, the unit 1266, that is a, another older truck. It's in fair condition. Uh, we plan on taking it to the auction unless y'all, y'all tell us otherwise. Along with 393, 259, 129. Uh, this one out here, you'll see it, it's, it's a really in poor condition, but I've, I've been asking, oh, hey, it's got a lot of low miles on it. Why is it, uh, we, the motor blew up in it, we had to put a motor in it. Uh, the twin axle that you see, uh, on, on tight turns tore up the streets a lot, took a lot of wear and tear on the V, the trucks as well. Uh, so we do with the drop-down axles now and they, you know, the, before our, that's what we went to. They seem to do a lot better. And then last and least, we got unit 111. That is just a parts truck. I don't even know how many miles are on it because nothing's there. We, we've robbed just about everything we could rob out of it to, to keep the other trucks going.
What about the tractor? No, I'm just joking.
That, uh, that, that's probably fixing to go to auction too.
Sell everything.
Uh, I imagine we might have to push you on that one, but we, we can sure give it a shot. Uh, that, that's all of our trash trucks. Like I said, that's, that's where we plan on going is the, uh, we, we've got eight total. Uh, five of them we plan on taking to auction. I don't know really what the value is. We've looked around. It's gonna be what somebody wanted to pay for them. Uh, nobody's in the market for used trash trucks, uh, especially not if they ain't got the, the front grapplers. Because to, for the trash trucks we have, you have to have a minimum two-to-three man unit. Uh, so it takes a lot more manpower there. Uh, so we, looking on auctions of what they went for, we, we're figuring about, you know, 10 to 15,000 dollars average across the board. If they, if they went to auction, I mean, unless y'all want, let me do something else with them.
That could be potentially 50,000 dollars, potentially.
Another project on the list.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, just going right back to the taxpayers, so, you know.
Have, have you approached cards? Are they interested? I mean, I guess no, auction's the best way.
No, ma'am, they're, they're, all, all their trucks, they're harmed, it's single man operated.
Like, well, maybe we could get a compactor and they could have our trucks.
Any, uh, any, any other direction or anything else that you guys wanna ask?
No. I'm glad that there, you know, that there's some value and we, we're not just sitting on them, they're just getting older, so we can get rid of them and get something.
That, that's our, our plan is to get them in the auction as quick as possible. That way they're still running and operating, uh, get more value out of them. When you let them sit too long, they don't run batteries good. People won't give as much if they don't hear them crank up, so.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number 17. Discuss and act on a resolution approving Damon Anderson as the Cox Field Airport Manager, fixed-based operator. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, hi, I do. So, um, as you know, we were thinking that we did not have to get this approved by council, um, but we do based on a city code. So tonight before you, as you know, um, Paul's last day was Friday, April 4th. And we were lucky to have some good candidates show up, but we have chosen the best candidate. So I was hoping if you could come up here, Mr. Damon Anderson is the selection that was made after interviews that included, um, Paul Stran as, um, he was in the room doing the interviews, which helped a lot because, you know, he speaks airport. We speak it minimally, but, um, it, we found out that Mr. Anderson speaks airport fluently. And so he is a good candidate for us. And we, he's come here tonight to be approved by you. So, um, we'd like to see if you have any questions or if there's any more information we can give you. Uh, Mr. Anderson has, uh, over 10 years of airport experience and, uh, we're excited to have him.
Counsel, any, any discussion, any questions or anything that you wanna ask?
Glad that you're here. Very good.
Mr. Anderson, I'm assuming you don't have any relation to Mr. Gene Anderson here? But-
Hope so, that's 40-year employee.
Yeah, there you go. We, we need some of that. So, uh, just wanna say, uh, if, if this goes through, you know, welcome. Uh, Mr. Paul Stran did a fantastic job and really got us into a good position financially from the airport operating standpoint. We really think council, EDC, there's so many others that have stated that, uh, the airport is a huge asset that's untapped. Uh, but it's starting to scrub, we're starting, starting to scratch a surface on the potential of that airport. So hopefully you can carry on that, that tradition and continue forward.
I appreciate that for sure, Mayor and Honorable Investment Council. It, uh, yeah, you're right, he did a lot. I mean, it's, uh, it's rare to find an airport self-sustaining the way, the way he got it. And that's, uh, it's very encouraging, very encouraging. And I look forward to the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Counsel, any other discussion? And if not, I'll hear a motion.
Well, I just have a question. Uh, from, uh, it said in the statute, I guess, it said that, and shall be paid such compensation as is prescribed from time to time by the city council. What does that mean?
I think we've placed that position on the, um,
Pay scale.
The pay scale.
Mm-hmm.
And so you've approved the pay scale.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I, that was strange, it was strange, it was misleading language, but I, I agree. It was like, ugh.
The, the point of it is that, is that it is on the pay scale and that you approve the pay scale, so.
I appreciate that clarification. That was, that was-
It was a different way.
It was easy.
You know, when that was adopted, that, that ordinance, uh, you know, until, as far as I know, until Paul, we contracted that job out. Uh, and so that would come up for contract every few years. And now we have an employee. But you are approving his compensation by virtue of having approved the pay scale.
And I will preface and say that we are waiting on one test to come back. Um, we have approval up until then with HR, but just, you know, approve this tonight and then it'll be based on one more approval of, uh, a test.
Sorry, but if you'll clarify for me one, one thing, pending approval, when would be the effective start date be again?
Oh, gosh, you- Oh, gosh, you know what, I forgot to write that down.
Couldn't remember if that was in our background.
Wednesday or Thursday, we have to wait for the test to come back.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, and I, I thought there was something missed and I just forgot, so, all right. Any, anything else, counsel, before we take a, a vote here? If not, I'll hear a motion?
移動
We got a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir. All right. Moving on to agenda item number 18. Consider and approve future events for the city council and/or city staff pursuant to resolution number 2004-081 and announcements of the city and/or Lamar County Chamber-sponsored events in Paris. Does anyone have anything?
Yes. We've talked, we kind of spoke about the Airbnb, the hot tax that we're not getting. So whatever we need to do to go into that, and if, if council, I, I'm sure y'all can talk to Rob about what we might be missing out on, and it's significant. So, uh, I hope y'all agree with me in making this a priority to get it done as quick as possible so we can start recuperating some of that, that, that tax and that list that, you know, you're passionate about it, it'll start going down if we can get some of this money. Uh, so just whatever we need to do to get that going.
I'll note, I, I brought that up now, I think a year and a half ago or so, or a year ago, and I, I'm going to stay out of the conversations, but I'm in, in support of that, so I'm just going to just say that, that out there. All right. Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, now, I'm not saying the regulation, because I think they proved that that's being done. I just want to recoup that money that we're missing.
I think we all do.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, anyone else have anything else they want to bring?
Um, I did, um, mention this, uh, to Mrs. Beverly, but I would like to see a Text Dot, um, presentation on the expansion of 271 and the new loop. Um, we just approved some, um, changes, ordinance, zoning changes, and I don't quite have a visual of what the new road will look like, so whenever Todd is available.
And we...
Or Text Dot, anywhere.
I have an update on that. We were actually able to schedule them, we haven't had confirmation, but they told us the dates that they could come, and we told them that the April 28th meeting would be good. So, um, as long as they let, answer us and say that's okay, we will get with Janice and hope for that.
Perfect.
And we also talked about, uh, the short-term rental stuff today as well, so getting that, working with staff on that. We're getting that ball rolling for a presentation there as well.
All right. If, if we can just publicize that meeting a little bit more, just because I know so many people are confused about what Text Dot's projects look like.
Right.
And this would be a great way to help promote our, our city council meeting and then also the endeavors of Text Dot, so, fantastic. All right. The City of Paris EMS is hosting KidSafe Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on May 3rd at the Love Civic Center. Um, and for a full list of events that are happening in Paris, please get online and plug into, plug in Visit Paris, Texas, and you'll find all the events that are happening within our community. With, without anything else, well, we, we have, uh, agenda item number 19, that's adjournment. We got a motion?